Good morning, Father. We thank you for this beautiful Lord's day and we just come before you tonight, Lord, just asking for guidance in this meeting that we're participating in here for the town of Bronson. We thank you, Lord, for everything you do for us and we ask that you just give us guidance and we've gotten direct. Yes, he's all in the name of Jesus.
I pray to be the steward of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My dear ones coming out from that season to our September 16th application. Starting with the roll call, Curtis is. Campbell's here. Dirk is here. Miss Sings here, Tyler's here, Franklin's here, I'm here, Miss Sherry is walking away, and Mr. Jennings here, and our illustrious attorney is on the Zoom machine tonight. Here's Miss Sherry. Motion on the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
That's it.
We have a motion to say approval on the agenda, all those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion, Harris. Next up is the approval for the minutes for the September 3rd, 2024 town council meeting.
I make the motion to have the approval of the minutes from September 3rd, 2024 town council meeting.
I see.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify the same eye, opposed, same motion, Harris. Next up is the minutes from the September 9th, 2024 trim public hearing.
I make the motion to have the approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2024 trim public hearing.
I see.
We have the motion in a second on the trim public hearing meeting, all those in favor signify the same eye, aye, opposed, same motion, Harris. Last minutes for the September 9th, 2024 fire assessment public hearing.
Move approval of the minutes from the September 9th fire assessment hearing.
That's it.
We have a motion in a second on the approval of the minutes for the September 9th, 2024 fire assessment public hearing, all those in favor signify the same eye, aye, opposed, same motion, Harris. Moving on to public participation, first of all, we'd like for you to complete a speaking request file submitted to the county general clerk, Ms. Lindy, approach the podium, speak clearly, state your full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. First up, Allen, talk to us, my friend, in case.
It may take longer than three minutes.
We will, we will.
First thing I do in the morning when I wake up is take my bed. I'm not sure whether you do or not, that's the different choice that one makes. Before I start my day, the reason why I do that, I've got my routine. My routine is get those things done, I usually get them before I start exploring the world and making decisions on bigger things. And my point would be to you, if that's an accomplishment, that's my first thing of the day is making my bed, setting the stage for the rest of my day. So how does that relate to Town of Bronson? It's a little thing that makes a difference. When you make those decisions in the little things, generally the bigger things, the municipal cities are a lot more wrapped. Now, what you have in front of me right there is pictures of code enforcement about some of the rundown properties in Bronson. And I'm ashamed of the next to them, down the street from, or generally in town of Bronson. Let's take a look at a little spot of the zone, School Street where the public schools are, where the parked buses and that sort of thing in that shop. But it's the radius probably two block area in my neighborhood.
Marshburg, right?
Marshburg, yes. I think it's written on the bottom of your picture that some of them are. These things have been abandoned, there were one of the Miller Room in the driveway on Ford Street, there was a four-way stop that I would rest assume about, and she's mailed a letter or two, I'm not sure who's going to get to it, the simple is it's been abandoned for about five years. And the model mix is generally taking it over as some of the other code that you see her in front of. My question is, does the town of Bronson tolerate this? Does the town council condone this, or is it one of these things you can't do nothing about? It's the simple reason, driving my property, part of this down, if I decide to sell my home in my value of my house, who's going to want to move here something like that with a roof and festive, a riding festive yard? This is absolutely grown up. So what do you do about it? Well, I think the town charter dress is that, church part of the fire department, they had met called that house, has got to be completely safe to go in, whether it's inhabited or not. And if you'll see one on Pine Street there with the clutter out in front of it, there's no way to work at night time. An officer wants to rescue a firefighter to get in the house and get inside the house, but still, there's a lot of stuff going on. Whether it be a golf cart or trash can, or just trash in the yard. Now, I know we've had these situations before, we've arrested, it's not one, two, three, four, five, it was probably or your code enforcement, now, when I talked to him, for some reason, I put another forty or fifty thousand dollars on my own in the past thirty days on Court Street, and it's not fair, I take care of my property, and I cut and crews the leg of my property, because one day I'll sell it, or whoever in my area will sell it, and hopefully a nice couple of new men there. So I'm investing my property in the lower of my yard, keeping the trash out of my yard, and picked up in front of my house, or somebody throws cups, trash, McDonald's, Harries Place out, I try to do my job, apparently these people don't get messy. So my question to you is, what do we do about it? I mean, it's simple to me, you address the issue, whoever's in the trust fund, or they're the property, who am I? Send, register the letter, sign them over a period of time, and then take possession of it to a lien from the property, and then sell it, because I made an interest in it, because I own property in Bronson, I'm looking to buy more, pay cash. But I don't want my piece of property sitting on something next to it and just stand there. Now, we can say whatever, do nothing about it, until you're the town councilman, I think it's a problem. Now, whether anybody else comes to town hall meetings or not, because you can't, if you shot a shotgun, you probably wouldn't hit very many people. This is every, now, the people in this town have given up. And you say, whatever, well, let's change it into the Town of Bronson or whatever. Well, somebody's not doing their job. I know everybody works here on this panel, you've got businesses or places to go to, everyone like I don't. But the thing about it is, this needs to be a priority. Because the people in the Town of Bronson deserve all of this. And yet, we need to reinstate a little bit of faith in the town council, and the Town of Bronson, the people show up to the town council meetings, and get involved, and vote, and turn. And we need more events. The only thing Bronson has not got is the perks. You know, we can say, well, the Eagles, that's high school, that's not going anywhere, I don't think, a little proud of that. Well, what else? Do we have any events to say, hey, come to Bronson, and we've got five new, five old businesses closed up? I'm naming for you, first door, restaurant, barber shop, candy store next to it, and a print shop on the very end of town, I talked to him, he doesn't even open his doors anymore. So some people have given up, what's happening to new businesses? Do we have anybody working on trying to solicit new businesses to come in the area? Because we don't have a veterinarian, we don't have a dentist, we don't have a drugstore, we only have like one or two restaurants, I tell you what we do have. We have a vape shop. Some people may vape, I personally don't. But I think the world gets better than this in Bronson. So what do we do about it? We get a steering committee together, start soliciting business, and knocking on doors? Or do we go to Wilson and find out what they're doing, because I see a lot of growth in that area of new businesses, and I've got statistics. Bronson's grown about a hundred people since twenty, twenty twenty. And they've grown to eight hundred over in Wilson. And if you've been out gone to the town council meeting, in every town in these three counties, and I've, I've took this job. And we all suffer through the same thing, water problems, population problems, growth problems, that sort of thing. But it is going to happen, you manage it, or it'll manage you as a town. And we sit in a perfect area. You're two hours from Tampa, major airport, you're two hours from Orlando, major airport. You're two hours from Jacksonville, and anybody in this country, when you say Jacksonville, Orlando, or Tampa, they say, boy. So we're at such close proximity, we're only taking advantage of this. We have within probably an hour drive, about twenty springs in the city. Don't tell me you can't go tourism because you can't. There needs to be a dive spot or something, if not that, something else. Well, we need to have a five-year plan, ten-year plan, or whatever, because if we don't, maybe a lot of the churches in can be fixed. You know, that, I mean, that's a separate group. I'm seventy-five years old, I may not see it, but it's coming, because you're losing people, you're always staying. You've got young people here in the agricultural community, they're not staying, they're going college, going somewhere else. We need this agricultural community, we need the farmers, people like Tyler, but what about his kids? What about your kids? Which you're going to leave and not come back. So we need to produce something to say, you know what, I'm going to stay here, I'm not saying go, maybe, or what I'm saying is, we deserve to count and see up there in Bronson, do we have, or you have? That's my three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Is anybody able to make a comment? I mean, what do you think?
I agree one hundred percent of what you're saying. But I just, I don't know how to go about implementing this person that owns this piece of property, why you didn't have more, more respect for his sake. Well, I follow the same path as you do, and, and these people that own the property, I, I don't know. This one here that's been abandoned for all these years, we have addressed that, correct me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have to say, I have to say, I can't read the address.
Well, this is the one on Marshburn that we've addressed previously, that we had the cars taken out, that this is that same one we've already done. This is the one where we had the stuff out.
The house stays there, but I think the people in the house, they're right around the corner right there. Facing the other side of the street. The tax records you pull out, and the one on Court Street is a lot of a hard start, and I think the people live in South Florida. They don't tend to get any contact, and somebody's going out behind me that I bought, that I'm expanding. Either in Minnesota, the only I got on the town are gone to call me, and that's what we take for, and finally sold it. So it's going to take a little network to do that, but who's going to do it? Is it my job, your job? Are we going to come and play with it?
What do we need to, I guess, we have to actually have a complaint?
I mean, I just, I'll address your concerns now, because, I don't feel impressed to me. So, we've talked about this before. Here, code enforcement is reactive, not proactive. I don't drive around town, I only can respond to somebody who makes complaints in writing. So these are all the complaints that I have addressed since I started here three and a half years ago. It's quite a bit. I know you think we're not doing anything, but that's, that is literally everything I've done before. So, you know, if you want to make a written complaint about these, I will send a letter and do exactly like I did with the other two you just gave.
You know what you can do, I'll take it one step further, you can tell in a letter, when you say, who complained? I put my address. I put my token.
I don't do that, only if it gets to the point where we actually put a fine on the property, then we have to disclose who the complaint is. I can tell you that I talked to the owner of twenty-five Easy Street on Friday morning, the second after she got the letter. She knew exactly who made the complaint, most people do, they know it's their neighbor or somebody who's walking in or something. She knew exactly who it was, and she's addressing, she's already got rid of the phones, and we talked about the dog, and. So, I mean, we are definitely doing what we can within the constraints that we have. When I started here, we didn't have a code enforcement person, we didn't have a code enforcement board, I mean, we have all of that now. But again, we have to have a complaint, I can't just ride around town and just go, you know, you have a problem, I can't do that. By law, we can't do that, so if you want to continue to make complaints, send them to me, send me pictures, we'll address them.
What you can do is, well, I need to sign, or what do you do, I need to write a letter?
Just send an email, just like you did the other two.
And, and, put me down for that, I love that town.
I mean, we can definitely, you know, we can address these, I mean, that's not a problem.
On Court Street? It says Court Street on the bottom of the aisle.
Yeah, that's the old motorhome that's going with the tree going through it.
But where is it?
That's the four-way stop, but the address, you can't tell, you can go from the tax record.
You can't see the address because.
I can't see the address.
It's six seventy-four, and I just sent alert for this one last week.
It's on Court Street.
Yes.
You can't see it on the watch, just before you get to where you were, James Call, please deliver it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is the one they built, so it's on. We had to pay anything.
Oh, that's why.
I've got to pull a waste stop sign.
Oh, okay, I know, I got it.
If you get stopped.
Please have a watch, like towards the corner.
I think this is going to build their wine on this, you know.
What I don't, what I don't understand is, is they didn't try next door to this. Came in there and took that car house, completely re- it, picks it up, and then they sold it. Yeah, makes for that, I don't understand. I can't believe. Well, you said, you can say it anyway. I, I don't understand, you know, why people do not have, like you say. In all due respect, you should not be the one to have to make a complaint against them, it should have been they stopping making the complaint, perhaps. You know, that's what I don't understand.
Well, in the same, you could actually say, when I learned, it was right down the street on Court Street. Now, we've had problems with the traffic in the street, and Bobby and I met on that shirt, we met on the long day or night, but I know on a different subject. But it's one of these things, I've put a hundred fifty thousand dollars on my house since I bought it renovated. Like I said, I spent fifty thousand dollars over the last thirty days erecting this steel building, I did all by code. So if somebody's going to do something by code, I've got to have a guy out there checking the locks off on me, why should the same people on this property have to do the same thing, that's the big difference. Now, you know, here, Peter, my point, if constituents, you know, who elected these folks here? And I talked to all the one-hour renter blocks, knocking on doors, talking to people, whatnot, there's a lot of people that you want to do that. I mean, I would be honest with you, you're going to walk out that door, I'm not sure what you're going to do, but you know what they said? It is what it is. And if that's the case, like I said, let's change the town's makeup, whatever. Because everybody in Woodless Street and Chieflin, you've got the same road, you should have the same road, you should have businesses coming here, like automobile stores or whatnot, or park stores, and agricultural community, those things we need. We got one dead here, dead here down on the left-hand side, going on it, they kill it, they park it like twelve all the time, that problem. People picking up kids, but the thing about this, they're working games, they pick their kids up here, they drop them off here, but why should they have to go again for the work when there may be opportunity here? Because I, I don't know.
And we've actually lost, and I know you said five businesses, just to let you know, it's actually twenty. And we send out the business tax receipts every year, we actually lost twenty businesses this year.
I believe it, you know how many businesses are in, I'm sure you do, in Bronson? If you're around that street, I'd say twenty, twenty and thirty, maybe a couple vape shops.
Well, you have to remember, we, I sent out about a hundred and twenty business tax receipts, but that's people that work from home, they're an accountant, they're a, you know.
Not those four friends.
Right, I don't know how many of those are storefronts.
Yeah, the car wash is closed up.
But it was never, now, now.
It was not here.
Oh, it was here.
But it's been closed for like ten years.
Yes, exactly.
Anything's closed.
Here's my point, it's still there, somebody could take it, make it a car wash.
No, somebody owned it, and until they sell it, that's just like with another, with some more businesses, some people don't sell unless it's the right people that they're looking to sell to.
Well, the good thing about it is, is anybody has.
I did, I swear, and they did not want to sell it, I did, I went in there at least six months ago.
I had told you a year and a half ago.
You know what there is? There was one day, and somebody's going to say, you know what they called it up? The house sold, name your price, like that piece of property behind me, I bet I called him a hundred times in Minnesota, and he said, no, he asked, no, he said, who are you? I said, I live right in front of that property right there. He said, here's what I want for, you know what I said? Sold. If you don't call me with the right data.
Look at AM, look at what they did. Now, they, they closed down for the summer, then they put out there that they may sell, then they said that they were selling, then they came out with a Facebook post once certain people asked about buying it, and they said, well, if it interests us to sell it, we'll sell it. I mean.
Okay, I accept, I'm lying, okay, let's say we're going to shake you down, I'm not going to argue for that, it's fine, legal time. But it's not good, but up here somewhere, I mean, if that was not for sale.
We need sewer.
We need sewer.
That is our biggest problem, we need the sewer expansion. And we have grants in, we have applications for grants to expand our sewer, but we have to have it.
What's in the game plan for next time?
That place already got sewer.
Well, you're going to tell, yeah, because we part of the, you have sewer.
Yeah, but they, they.
Well, we just started doing the stuff for annexation, discussion.
We talked about that.
We're working with a company right now called Retail Strategies, we're trying to get a grant for, to help us with recruiting new businesses. We are working on that, and it's forty thousand dollars a year, we need grants for it, we don't have that kind of money.
And we're a little hard to attract new businesses, because, like I said, in Wilson and Chieflin, they go up to sewer that runs all the way through their town, and it's very hard to attract the business and tell them that they're going to have to put in a separate tank. To open it.
Okay, you, you give me problems.
No, but I'm, that isn't the thing that we're working on.
It's an issue like, like Wilson has the water issue, well, so do they do over here at Seer Key. All channels here do that, I've heard that from everybody, horseshoe beach all down.
But that's what they do.
What act of, I don't, what act of mind do you have to, to the solution? Now, Sue said you're looking for grants, this sort of thing, that's one thing. I mean, do we need that?
That's it, I mean, the sewer expansion alone is eighteen million dollars. I mean, we don't have that kind of money.
We don't want to make a million-dollar fire.
The city doesn't have a revenue, the city has.
Which is paying through a revenue.
The city doesn't.
Yeah, the reason why, does that revenue? There's no revenue. There's no new families, we have the highest military.
But you're asking why?
We actually don't.
No, we don't know.
It is hot, but the thing about it is, what do we, what, okay, you're a new family, and you're looking to out there, and you go to Wilson, you go to Chieflin, you go to Seer Key or whatnot, you have to be asking yourself, why would a person move to Bronson? And if you're lost at the answer, then you need to start steering a committee or something, you need some answers together, because they're only new families.
And you need good internet. Once this town has both of those things, you will definitely be broke. There's no doubt.
Is it five years, ten years, or what? Those are going to die.
The internet is imminent, I mean, we don't have, the council has it, so that's imminent, and we're hoping to get, we, we're very close to getting this eighteen million dollar grant to expand everywhere else in Bronson, we're very close.
Well, if you remember several years ago, I was on a committee that said, well, here's our grant for code, we came up with like, what was it, four hundred thousand dollars?
Three million, yes.
Well, we got five people, because I was on that committee, and we sat down and we said, here's the five things we need to do. We had, I'm not sure what happened, because I don't know what happened, so it was slammed, it got paid. Now, we did repair the pumps on the water, I think.
Oh, the harbor money, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, but the other things, the four or five things, didn't get done, and there's things in Bronson we need, and how do you generate revenue to pay for those things? Well.
We did, we actually did ten things out of that capital for the plan.
I can't see it, but you know what happened?
We did. And we don't.
We were building a thirty million dollar pipeline between here and Seer Key, so we stand on that, we're working on that.
Once again, that's.
With grants.
That's a good idea.
But, but the thing about it is, it's a vision, and going to the bank, like I do, when I own something, you own a new car, new house, or whatever, I go to talk to my loan officer, and I start researching where I can find the money for it, pulling that, and I'm, well, I'm here to tell you now, I'll move better for Bronson, just me, I don't know about all the rest of residents, but I live here. And, you know, I'd do something better than what I see now.
You know, I'd be, I don't know, if I were mine for that, and I'm thinking, I don't think I was going to be next. And I keep my house up there, you know what I'm saying, that I don't brought this to the council, but you don't ever get them out, and what are we going to do? And maybe I'll read your wallet, man, it's tight.
Can I, can I answer your question one more time, okay? You know, answer this, if truthfully, as honestly as I thought, this is from a business person, this is from a landlord? I just put a piece of property for sale right behind hardware, it's for sale right now. You want to buy it, it's there, we can expand, oh, you want to, you can go out there and put a Walmart down, there's enough land.
Well, it's eighty acres, it's eighty acres of production school.
Clear.
I mean, that's all you got.
There's plenty up there.
You asked Amazon distribution facility?
I asked. Well, here's what I'm saying, in a sense, we cannot control the individuals and what they want to do with their money. We cannot entice somebody without giving them some kind of, you know, you know, we, we used to, we used to have deferred taxes, but we can't do that. We used to say we could do this, and we could do all these other things. Those things are not, I mean, if I deferred taxes in Bronson right now, we'd be broke.
For what? You're something a medical expert on that, I don't know that. When I, I'm going to form with this one also, because somebody turned to the TV, so I've got to have a hand in it. But you know what, I'm trying to research one opportunity, where there is something we can do, let's take advantage of it, okay?
But, but, like I say, I'm trying to answer some of the questions. It's just like the pipeline, you toast on it a lot again, here's what this thing could do for us, if it goes through, I hope it does. It could update our infrastructure for the next twenty, twenty years, as far as sewer, water system, every twenty, twenty-five years. The city of Newbury right now is fixing to have to expand their sewer system, how much is it?
Sixty million?
Sixty something million dollars, just to update, okay, that's the cost compared to some of this stuff. And to be first, to be honest with you, if I, if we had to do the same thing right here, right now, and we're, we're getting close, because this subdivision that's coming in is going to get us not to the tilt, to the point where we've got to start the project of looking into expansion, but it's going to be real close. Of course, these are dominos, you stand them up to knock them down, okay, it's the same old thing. This could solve all those problems, okay, if, if it does come through. Again, what is this going to happen? That's five, six, seven years now, ready. But the system is in work, okay, to try to accommodate this. Two grants, and that's the only way we got to get it.
Do you have to sell?
Do you have to sell?
Yeah.
Oh, we've already sold, it's just a matter of just getting.
You're going to turn like the minute, people will know we don't want that, but two seconds too. Also, that's equipment, that's a jumping off spot, I'm taking my RV, which I like to do, and go straight to Key West, right out here. You know, and I'm thinking, is that it for me? The hub here is not an opportunity for two hours, two hours, two hours, where persons say to themselves, I want to move my family to Bronson, because of the super school system, there's a barber shop, which we lost, there's an opportunity here, the amenities that we need, and the thing, we can go see like the grocery store, whatever, we got convenience stores here, they're not only shopping for business here. I'll do the Scott purpose, the actual whatever, but we have to have more of that, we have to have a dentist, we have to have a better airplane. You know, they used to have, we used to have, have to have more than one, one place you can airtime. One more than one place, you can drop your kids off. I mean, if, if I were thirty, forty years old, I would say, you know what, I love business, and I can get into business with it. I did second year, I was a million dollars, the cell phone, the number square feet, show everybody bigger than this. So it's all in marketing, and how are you going to have, they got to ask you, how are we going to market Bronson? You said revenue, driving in revenue, that's a key to, to bail gun, we ain't going to get. And that's something that. Location, we got it.
I, I agree with what you said.
I used to be at, I was hiding for fifty-five years, I used to come there and got all these friends, plus Chris, from Riverbury, students standing here to check out, and I was being checked out, and certified. Now, when people come down here and they do that, guess what they do? They draw out money, and that's what you want. I'll take enough of them up there.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you. All right, someone go read one up. Information lives, uh, here, here we go. What was said, order.
Hold on a second, did you guys want to speak? Want to speak?
I don't think it's necessary at this point, just wait till.
Or do you want to wait until that portion on the? Okay.
Can I say something?
Can I say something? Marketing is everything, exactly what you said. If you don't market your business properly, there won't be a business. The economy as a whole right now is a nightmare.
You also have to coexist.
The whole, the whole world, I mean, or the whole country is in chandeliers, not just Bronson.
This man might have a lot of money to invest.
But it's not just Bronson. Yeah, Bronson is my love.
Everybody has the money that this man has to invest. So there's logistics to everything. You can't answer all those questions right now.
It can't be done.
But I do love that he makes it better every day because I, I make my bed every day. I do, and I swear, I was like, "Oh, I love that." It's so true.
If you don't have the people to patronize businesses, they're all gonna go bankrupt. So, and that's why here, we have a laundromat. Nobody went there, so they have to go down.
We have Bronson pharmacy, that's, that's, we got that.
But if you don't, like, people are still proud about it.
And I go there.
You know, they're not, they're not, they ain't gonna go.
We got people that live in Bronson, we're complaining about here with businesses that we have.
But they won't go there and spend money.
I'm telling you, I've been here for three years and I didn't even know that pharmacy was there.
It's a shame because he has all empty space he could put money.
Well, for, for the record, I can't say that people are moving to Bronson because we definitely got between fifty to seventy new kids at the school. And I can tell you that. So people are moving to Bronson and bringing their families because we have over a hundred kids in the sixth grade this year. For, and that's one grade. There's over a hundred in other grades. So people are moving here. We went from four something to well over five fifty in the time since school started. So people moving because their kids are going to school.
People also need to realize too that the city of Bronson is four square miles. So some of the places he's speaking about, two, no, it's four now, it's four square miles.
Four point two.
Four point two. So some of those places that people look at, we can have this, we can have that. It's not in the city. We don't have anything to do with it. It's not. Like, there's sixty acres outside of the school. It's not in the city. That's not if it's necessarily us, the way he thinks it would.
We also have a tax division that does not want Bronson to grow, unfortunately. And we have to coexist.
I love Bronson. I moved here from South Florida.
We absolutely have to coexist.
And I moved here for peace, so that's why you moved here.
We don't want it to grow. We just have a couple things in town, but if people move to Bronson, I mean-
We have to coexist.
Yep.
Right, we have to.
All right. I'm gonna say that off back then.
Go ahead.
I think, I mean-
Take him to church.
A lot of these things have no value. I think the mayor should check on some of these people sometime. Like, check the line of that. Check on how are y'all doing all right? Who's y'all with?
The business owner.
My question to you, Elijah, is one thing and one thing on. What am I gonna do to change his mind from opening or closing?
No, you need to ask him.
No, 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 no. I want you to answer that question for me the best of your ability.
Well, it's an answer.
What could I do to entice him if he's losing money? Okay? To the point that he has to close his store? What can I do to him or anybody else on this council to change his mind?
Well, if you first of all, if you went to him and asked him, "Are you doing okay with it? What can we do?" I suggest, well, let's put you back in the news level again. Let people know that you, you're here.
That should be a good business plan to reach out to you.
The market there, a lot of that.
Looking for support, you know, it's not, you have to reach out to your place.
And, and we don't mind doing stuff like that to help do anything that we can. But again, you can, it, it's just like the barber shop down here closed. That was not the cause of the finance.
No, they closed for reasons.
There was a reason for that, okay? It didn't have nothing to do with that. And it, and, and it is for sale. And if anybody wants to be a bar, help yourself.
And the family Dollar Tree wanted to come here, but the people of Bronson shut it down. They didn't want, they're so hot. If they don't want, you know, something like that here, then nobody else gonna come here. You know, you gotta start smaller than a small town.
We have the pop shelf, though, that's great. It's like a dollar store, but even better, right? You know, they have all kinds of stuff, home decor, pillows, anything.
And we got that because nobody else wanted it. We was last resold. They came here and they said, "We tried to get those dollars in our pocket." That was the first one they built. And I said, "Yes, we'll do whatever we can do to help you." And that's how that got here. And then this same with the little closet out here. We actually had to kill them that land, gonna put that there. But nobody patronizing. We had Harvey Hours in there. Nobody patronized, so they had to close down. You know, you can't make people, you got businesses coming and like the one that wanted to come, the town's people voted it down. And I'm sure he was one of them.
And let me say thank you again for allowing Dollar Tree on the marketplace because it's been time for, that's the only place we can get first groceries.
I agree.
All right. Well, I'm gonna make me this horse dead, okay? And it's still, it has to do with, you know?
Well, he's trying to make the code enforcement, uh, green, so he knows what he's gotta do now, so he can do that.
All right. We're gonna make it green, then we can act on it.
If you got a boat in a RV, you should have that there.
I was just gonna ask you, how does that work? If you find them, if, if their property looks like that, they might not have the money.
Some of these people are dead.
Right. But they're not gonna pay a fine if they're not gonna have the money to move their stuff.
They don't take that one after they even deal with that.
Well, until he puts in writing, there's nothing we can do about it.
We don't have a coenforcement person that writes a contract.
We place a, we place a lien on this one.
Oh, oh, I got, gotcha.
So, my question to you, uh, I think it's Prime Terrace. You still looking at your grant for that road?
I would like to, but that other road does need some improvement. That, uh, um, the one that goes up from Tyrus, it needs some, it needs some TLC.
All right, so you, you working on that?
We, so we have to ask for a grant, but we have, we have other things that we have to ask for before Prime Terrace.
You know, I mean, this is a current thing. I'm, I'm talking about this because that firehouse up there, we said that you couldn't do it right. But I understand Dennis did it right. He wrote that one. Do we not know how to write my certificate?
Dennis did not hire that. Dennis did not write that grant.
Dennis got that.
No, I'm telling you now, Dennis did not write that grant. Dennis wrote any-
Where did you write?
No, I was not here, thank God. However, Dennis, let me, let me speak and I will tell you. Dennis hired somebody by the name of Paul Anderson and Eric, what's his last name? Starts with a B or something.
I know his last.
And they were both written into that grant. So that grant paid for those administrators. The city currently has a grant administrator. And several, and they, that is how our grants get written. What people don't understand is that if you start pointing fingers, grants are very labor intensive. Grant is not sitting down for twenty minutes and writing a two-page report. Grants take yeet, research, time, effort. We have those people.
Well, it's not making Wilson and Chief any use of it.
But the Chief and have more than four employees. It does not, you can't sit down, Mr. Elijah.
Well, you need more employees.
We have a grant administrator. You know what, Mr. Elijah? You come to my office tomorrow, you spend eight hours with me, and you see what goes on in that city hall. And then we can have a discussion of what goes on from what does not. And what people human cannot do. I don't think you can come down to my office, say the time you want to-
Oh, I do, I do.
Yeah, you come sit with me.
Mark. Can I have a floor? Okay. We'll be here tomorrow. All right. Information lives. The W three C Walkers Session, whatever, and West Quarter Cooperative Board meeting in Wednesday, September eighteenth at one P M in Syracuse. Everybody can come. It is an advertised meeting. All right. Uh, Jen Kirkoff has a meeting greet at the September nineteenth, Thursday here.
Mr. Bronco, can you speak up, please?
Okay. Uh, Jen, Jen, is that right? Jen Kirk. Jen Kirkoff?
She ran it for county clerk.
Lee County clerk, cool, right. And she, there will be a meeting greet here, September nineteenth at six P M. Our next trim public hearing on the final budget administered is Monday, September the twenty-third at five oh one. Yeah.
Five oh one. Because you can't have it at five P M. Boy.
Yep. Lee County Health Department, Community Health and Fooding Plan is Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth at one P M. Where is that?
Here.
Yeah, okay. Uh, bread of the Mighty Food Bank Mobile Food Drive is Friday, September the twenty-seventh at nine thirty. That's at the James Farm Park. North Florida Transportation Planning Summit is Tuesday, October the eighth at nine thirty. And that is Anthony. Make sense? Yeah. Our next beautiful Bronson day, number seven, is Saturday, October the nineteenth at ten A M. And that is going to be where?
Cemetery.
Cemetery. The Homecoming Parade is Thursday, October the twenty-fourth at five P M. At the regular homecoming.
And the theme is, uh- It's not Cinderella, it's- No, it's, um, like Cinderella, uh-
Oh, fairytale.
Fairytale, yes.
If the kids get to it.
All right. Trucker Treat is Saturday, September the twenty-sixth at six thirty P M. That is at the James Farm Park.
We have, what, three churches now?
Really?
We, I just, you know me today. So three, um, so-
What? What?
I, uh, First Baptist Church, uh, Living Hope?
Yeah, Living Hope.
Living Hope.
Because, uh, Mr. Bicham told me that he spoke with the pastor.
Okay. And then I don't know what church, um, Susan Bazin, it's in Reston, B A Z I N, whatever church he's associated with. She just emailed this afternoon. So we've got three.
I know that, okay.
Does that mean everybody goes to the church or the church, they're coming to the park?
If they're coming to the park, they set up as like a-
How many, you only have three?
You can do it if you're up. Everybody, anybody can do it.
I'm gonna probably-
Last year, we're, last year the churches didn't want to be involved because we did it on Halloween night. And that's the devil's night, what they say. So.
Yep, that is a night.
Hey, that's what they said.
True. Right, that was one true.
That's what they said. That's why I heard.
One person.
Do you know how many trucks, uh, have signed up so far? Or you got two?
You can, isn't Vicki, Vicki's on the-
We have a-
I talked to Vicki, yeah.
We're always open. We never had too many.
We, just, the one last year, we had thirty-four just at the one church up the road here. Just thirty. Yeah, we were there, yeah. It was thirty-four there last year.
And you said, I'm sorry, you said, uh, October twenty-sixth, that, what time?
Six thirty.
Thank you.
Our next town council meeting is Monday, October the twenty-eighth.
Nope. Question mark. So we need to talk about that. The general election is Tuesday, November fifth. Normally, we would have a council meeting on Monday, November fourth, but we can't because they're gonna be setting up. So do you guys wanna do, you know, we don't normally meet in October, but do you wanna do the preceding Monday, October twenty-eighth? We can't do the following Monday because it is Veterans Day, the eleventh, Monday, the eleventh is Veterans Day. Or do you wanna do Tuesday, the twelfth? Those are your two options. Unless you have someone to offer you, but. So you can go back a week or go forward a week.
The election is, is the whole-
The election is the fifth.
Okay.
So they're gonna be setting up here on the fourth. We can't do the fourth.
Okay, and-
Right?
The day of the, is Veterans Day.
Right.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna do it at the end of October or wait until November.
You actually could do it the next day if you wanted to.
The sixth.
Or sometimes we would, sometimes we would actually do it the next day.
Maybe I have to do the sixth.
Right.
No, that'd be better.
That'd be better.
That'd be better. Be closer to schedule.
Yeah. It's not feel.
No, it's the, um, it's church night.
I do this, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What's that?
But what I'm saying-
Church, church night. It doesn't have to be, it's getting to four.
We have options.
Ain't nobody here who's no way.
The sixth.
Apparently, she was shocked when I hit it.
I think the Lord gives this more than that.
We've got Trunk or Treat right around.
We've got so much that we. Can we put the sixth?
Uh, we've got two more for church night.
Too much of a church night for you, man.
Now those things do not go together.
In the same group.
Tyler Wood.
All right, so we're going to go with Wednesday, the sixth, but?
No, because Tyler can't, Tyler Wood can't be a part of it.
He can, can you just, can you just not go that one night?
I, I could, yeah.
So soon we have it on the twelve. Uh, the next meeting will be on eighteen?
No.
For November.
Right.
Oh, we don't.
Oh, yeah. Then you got two hours in the round.
So. I, I kinda like what uh V mentioned about having the sixth. I mean, it, it might be a church night, but. Basically, nobody here with us.
I don't go to church, so.
Yeah, you're right.
I think we let people earlier enough, anybody that desired to come, this is early enough.
We got plenty of time there.
You're gonna change it in our little thing because mom and I.
Sure, the next meeting in November is when?
The sixth.
You can go to, at seven o'clock on the night of the election, October.
No.
In early, early voting starts uh the October twenty-first and goes to November second.
And if they should be on stage, get that something.
Maybe it'll be a quick meeting, I can make it erratic by the time we get done.
Last thing on here is general election is Tuesday, November the fifth. Oh, I should've told you.
Um, can we add to that, um, start adding, um, there is a, well, I guess we need to help get the word out. There's a bus that comes in for people who do not have health insurance, and I'll find it and send this up to you. Um, they are coming twice a month, but because people are not using it, we're losing the dates. At the health department, and they, it's for people who don't have insurance, so it's free.
They bring.
So you would have shans.
Yeah.
It's in October, they have two, two dates in October, and then they have two dates already picked out from the window door, too. Actually have it at the house.
So. People are not, I mean, are not, so they're here, but people are not taking advantage of it, so I mean, that's.
That's just like it.
I'm sure they advertise.
I'm sure. Yeah, but they advertise, but these people know that that bus is there.
The health department advertised.
That's it, yeah, and I wanna say, I saw it on Facebook, and I think we have something at the school with it, but that.
Other, other churches pay for it.
Yeah.
Also, so like the, um, First Baptist Church, the chief of ethics would pay for them to come to their church. And do stuff.
Really?
But that's how I find about it, but I think it's one to share.
Yeah, it's one to share, is it?
Yeah, so I can get the, fill the date so we can, we can start sending that out, even if we, um.
Yeah, I'll send.
Have to make a, you know, sticker and put it on something so we can put it out, maybe you can put it across the marquee or something.
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
Marquee.
I mean, really, and you can advertise to some people, you take advantage or not. I, I must email my parents every day, and I still get letters back, because people don't understand why, why their child pay, what I sent you your papers.
They're here twice a month, on the first and third Tuesday of every month. They're here from nine to two, as long as they have patience. They will leave at eleven A M. if they don't have anybody coming, so it's on the first and.
Third Tuesday.
First and third Tuesday from nine to two, but if nobody shows up, they're gonna leave at eleven.
We're gonna leave.
In front of.
In front of the health department.
It's okay.
Cause that's a, that's a resource, we have a lot of people that can use that. They just gotta use it. We don't, we don't wanna lose that.
We also have an after-school program that's not being utilized also. It's the achieve program, and there are both schools, at the elementary school, on Monday through Friday, kindergarten to fifth grade, and stay until like five.
Five fifteen, if they pick up, if you want to take the bus home, you'll get home at six.
At the high school, it's Monday through Thursday, but it's still until five, so when, when people don't get off in time to, to get to the bus stop or get to the school to pick their kids up, they can easily put them in the achieve program. They also give them a bag of snacks while they're there.
And if you don't have internet there, that's, that's kids' house.
But it's not being utilized, the lady that I saw for today, they just put class to bed, and they literally only have eleven students at that high school.
All right, uh, first up is Resolution twenty-four dash thirteen, authorizing a setback variance for six sixty-seven March from Drive, parcel ID number is zero nine four six one zero zero three zero zero. So.
This is the one we discussed the last.
This is the one that we discussed last week, about the shed that is three feet, seven inches from the property line. It was supposed to be ten feet, but we're gonna, then assuming the council is okay, we can look on the variance, if they don't have to move the shed or cut the shed or remove the shed.
All right, pleasure to councils.
I make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-four dash thirteen.
All right, we have the motion and the ticket, and Resolution twenty-two. So four dash thirteen, all those in favor, see if they're not.
All right.
Those say you are secure.
Okay, the next up is Resolution.
Can I ask a question? Um, I'm just curious. Are we gonna have some sort of like cutoff thing to stop? Um, to stop trying to stick sheds under an umbrella that may not have existed when they were put on the property? Is there a timeframe that, that it actually exists? Cause there was years here where you didn't, people just didn't have a permit to put a shed on the property, and in the next, in the last maybe five years, it's become very mandatory. But before that.
That, that comes through the manufacturer, right, the people that sell the shed get permits? Did that, 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 those are the people that get the permit?
Oh, yeah, you've got to get.
But I mean, like, is there, is there a, like a grandfather name timeframe?
Because I have a case by case basis.
Yeah. Just to make a point about that.
And I'm like, it wasn't a matter that. It was on the property, you know, just too close to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we knew that.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm asking, because you know, we have a lot of sheds that were put probably, you know.
And most people put it to the edge of their property because we didn't know, all of mine is not, but we didn't know. You just put it to the edge of your property because you don't use it that much, you just allow it.
I mean, I think this is a pretty specific case, and if it wasn't for the complaint about the pig, and then the counter complaint about living in the shed, and then like going over there to see that they were living in the shed, I mean, there was a lot of. Things that happened to get us looking at the shed, it was not ten feet. Again, normally, we're not just going around town going like.
Well, I don't know, no.
I'm, 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 again, for the record, I'm not doing that.
Nobody in the office is doing that. Nobody in the office is doing that.
And maybe he has a boat, then an R V, ain't no way.
He drives down my street one, one day. Looking.
Okay, we'll see now.
Okay, next up is Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, a resolution of the town of Wilson affecting a budget event. So let me explain a little bit about what was going on here. So as you may recall, this, um, the SCOP grant was for the reconstruction of Wilson Avenue. Originally, the grant was awarded by F D O C for three hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The bids all came in much, much higher than that, and so F D O C agreed to increase the total grant award to five hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. But yet, we didn't reflect that change in the general fund budget, so we are dangerously close to coming to the edge of our general fund budget. And then it dawned on me, I was like, oh, we need to do a budget event. So this hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred dollars is gonna increase the final, um, general fund budget for this current year, because again, this plan's closed out. So currently, the fund is at one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. It's gonna go to one million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. So it's increased by the amount of the grant, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen.
Pass it.
All right, we have the motion and a second. We accept Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, all those in favor, see if they're not the same height.
All right.
Please, same motion, carry on.
All right, next up is going to be sort of complicated, I'm gonna try and work my way through this as best I can. So I gave you guys a handout, that literally just happened at three oh eight this afternoon, looks like this. So remember, we talked at the last meeting, we've been talking about our insurance, our commercial insurance, and how much it's gone up over the last three or four years. So at the last council meeting, you guys decided, again, we're talking specifically about property insurance, we're not talking about liability, auto, um, work comp or cyber liability. So we agreed to increase the name storm deductible from five percent to ten percent, and we're gonna get closer to our own budget. So as of this morning, we were at sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that was with a five hundred dollar, what they call an A O P deductible, so that's anything other than hurricane, basically, and then the ten percent name storm deductible. And our total property was insured, T I V, the insured value, is ten million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I went to Brown and Brown, I asked for a quote specifically for property, I did not ask them to quote all of the lines, I just asked for property. They came back, and I'll give you a little, little, um, insight as to Brown and Brown, you know, your partner knows a little about this, but they have a lot of two hundred clients on the, like municipality and counties and all that stuff, they do insure the state of Florida. Their quote is coming in at sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, so three hundred dollars lower, with a thousand dollar A O P deductible, so double what our comments is, but then a five percent name storm, so back to what we originally had. The total insured value with them, with Brown and Brown, is ten million, nine hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The other thing that Brown and Brown offer, which is kinda like what Vice Mayor Schuler asked for, was they offer a stated value policy of five million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for thirty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. So with them, they are allowing us to say, we will insure roughly six million dollars, blank, period, okay? So here's some pluses and minuses. The plus is there's no co-insurance clause that applies, and we talked about this before, so even though we would be insuring roughly ten million, sorry, six million of the ten million. If we had a loss, we would just, they would pay the whole loss minus your deductible, they wouldn't be penalizing you for the fact that you're not per a hundred percent insured value. Here's some minuses. With Brown and Brown, they reevaluate your property every three years. And one of the reasons that we're kind of in this dilemma with F M I T is because they have not looked at our total property in many, many years, I think like ten, fifteen years. I mean, again, the fire station alone is three million dollars of the ten million, so every three years, we've got a line, they come in and they get resized. The other thing is with Brown and Brown, you have to pay your premium all at one time. So that sixty-five thousand dollars would be due probably by the end of October. With F M I T, we pay it in quarters. It's a huge difference for us. The other thing is they just haven't been around in terms of doing this kind of insurance, they've only known this for about twenty years, we've been with F M I T for over four, so it just doesn't have as much of a track. So I sent this over, because this is what I did two years ago, to me, uses his leverage with F M I T, I sent it over to them today, and I said, here's what I got with Brown and Brown, what do you guys want? So they came back today, and I said, I said, listen, here's my biggest concern, I don't even have enough budgeted to cover my total premium with F M I T, I'm off by like thirty-two hundred dollars. And they said, okay. And I said, I'd really like to get back to the five percent name storm deductible, not the ten, and we just quit. So they came back and they said, she, she was scrambling, let me tell you, she was scrambling. Um, they dropped it by thirty-five hundred, they actually took the thirty-five hundred off of the general liability premium, they went from nineteen oh nine eight to fifteen five oh one, so that's what they made up the difference, probably because we made a lot of G O. And then they got us down to seven and a half percent name storm deductible, not the five, by seven and a half, so let's quote it. Now, keep in mind, we, in the time I've been here, we have not made any property claims, not one. I mean, if you want to claim, we've made no property claims. I actually don't think we've made a property claim since twenty, I wanna say either twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, I don't know what it was, but it's been a while since we made a property claim. The other thing that sort of swayed my decision today is, and F M I T's probably doing this because they might put the ball back in our court. We aren't able to just move the property alone, they told me today that if we move the property, we have to move everything. So if we do that, you're talking with probably over a hundred thousand dollars, we would have to obviously go up to this, if we were to just move this over, that's from Brown and Brown, with a hundred thousand offering. Again, it would be due all of, sort of, whatever that total break is, we'll be doing thirty days. So my recommendation would be to take what they gave us, which is, you know, the thirty-five hundred dollars less on the G O, take the seven and a half percent name storm, it's not as great as we had, but again, we don't make a lot of claims, and I would just stay with that for my team, that's my personal opinion. I know that was a lot. Try to make as this possible. Questions?
Don't save three hundred dollars a year anyway, a property tax, it doesn't make sense to move, move.
I think.
Move it for twenty years.
Right.
Just to save three hundred dollars a year.
And I don't know, again, you know, she was trying to say today, well, you know, they're low on you, and they're gonna let you do this, you know, stated policy in the first year, and then they'll probably come back in year two and say, you gotta apply, you gotta do it fully, and I, I, you know, insurance companies are notorious for that, you know, they.
They're gonna give you what you want the first year and then.
Correct.
Take it.
They say, no, we're not doing that anymore, you gotta, you're gonna do that in year one, and then move right down. So I mean, this would at least get us to within budget. And hopefully next year, I mean, then we're, then we aren't properly insured, so.
Am I rude to F M I T?
But we can't afford to pay, we couldn't afford to pay the.
Yeah, we can't.
That premium at one time either.
Yeah, we can't put our, our check at one time anyway.
That's correct, that's, when I read that today, I was like, whoa, that's a lot of money.
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the, um.
Your bottom.
The advised terms with F M I T for insurance policy.
That's it. All right, we got a motion, with a second. All those in favor, see if they're not the same height.
Yeah, but you know what, they're, they're great to leverage, I, I love to use it because then they, they could, you know.
They gave us two and a half percent, thirty-five hundred.
Heck, yeah. It's all keep doing that.
They make enough money every year, they can, they can afford it.
Okay, and so this is really just for, um, informational purposes, um, the foreigner rural infrastructure fund grant application, uh, we just submitted today, it was due by pulls of business. So, um, this was written, this grant was written by Mid Tower, so like we said earlier, Elijah, we actually work with three different companies for grants. Mid Tower Associates is our engineer, so they do like our SCOP grants, water and sewer grants, we have Fred Fox that works on our C D V G and our Ford App grants, and now we have Shannon Williams, who's somebody that we got from the Waka Sasa, we actually have three different brands. So with this grant, we actually have over thirty-three million dollars in grant applications out there right now, so we're just waiting for somebody to give us some money. Um, so what this would be for is to fund a water and wastewater master plan, they would evaluate our current infrastructure, identify future needs, provide a detailed roadmap for system improvements, aligning with our role in the Waka Sasa Water and Wastewater Cooperative. Ensures a long-term liability, sort of reliability and compliance while supporting economic growth through infrastructure improvements that draw, that drive job creation and capital investment. And most importantly, it supports the town's B map milestones, because again, we have these milestones we need to beat. So the total amount of funding is a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred thousand is for engineering, and fifty thousand for project planning, and then the timeline for completion is about fifteen months. So this is the same grant the Waka Sasa got for three hundred thousand dollars to do a facility plan, it's basically the same sort of thing, but for us instead, for the town. So. Yeah, this is good today. So that's why. All right, uh, next up is termination notice to Bronson Youth Sports. So in your packet, there is a letter that I have been working on with a attorney a couple of last week or so. It's dated today, so if you guys approve this, it will be going out certified tomorrow, it's addressed to David Angela from Bronson Youth Sports, and it says, at the town council meeting on Monday, September third, twenty twenty-four, the Bronson Town Council unanimously agreed not to renew the memorandum of agreement between the town of Bronson and Bronson Youth Sports, Inc., which expires on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I'll explain that in a different minute. This notice is given pursuant to paragraph six of the memorandum of agreement calling for at least sixty days' notice of non-renewal. Please be advised that this is not a negotiation and that the council is interested in pursuing the youth sports program with another nonprofit organization. Should Bronson Youth Sports continue to exist as a five oh one C three, it will not be given priority at the James H. Cobb Park or the town account, town-apointed youth sports program. Please refer to Public Works Director Curtis Stacy to ensure that all town-funded equipment is returned prior to the end of the agreement. If you have any questions or concerns regarding hesitate to contact me via telephone or email. So the reason for the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five date, in your packet, you'll see, um, the memorandum of agreement was dated February third, twenty twenty, that was signed by Ms. V and Angela Lamb. However, the resolution, which is Resolution twenty dash zero five, was voted on February eighteenth of twenty twenty. So attorney and lawyer advise that we need to take a later of those two dates, so even though the memorandum of agreement was signed on the third, the resolution wasn't passed until the eighteenth, so that is the date we have to go with. It's February eighteenth of twenty twenty-five, obviously, we would be giving them, is that five months notice? And that pretty much gets us through, you were talking about.
Basketball, that we had the end of basketball.
So all the supporting documentation is in your packet.
So we have no sports.
No, that's not what she said.
I want, I want to clarify, I want somebody to clarify.
Clear. Nah, clear sheet.
Not renewing our contract with Bronson Youth Sports, but there's other parties interested in starting another youth organization.
Should we have something like that?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Do you want to vote on the letter? Make a motion to approve the termination notice for Bronson Youth Sports.
He wants to speak now. Do you want, Jack, do you want to speak now?
I don't have an agenda.
Okay, let them vote first. Let them vote first, okay.
I have a motion and a second.
After.
All those in favor, see if they're not the same height.
All right, so on, once everything is done and it's handed over, I'll have an agenda, we'll set up a meeting, and we'll speak, speak at that point. I, I, I do have a question to, uh, shoot, Miss Schuler.
I think.
Stand up.
Oh. Jack Martell, appreciate all y'all's time, um, all the registration money that they have now for the sports, the golf courts. It's not gonna interfere when we take over, correct? I mean.
Um, I think I.
You gotta take over. Like you're, you're, you.
Well, we are all united.
Three is gonna come in.
Correct.
So you're not taking over their follow.
No, not, not there, I, I just mean, it's not intertwined with the timing, correct?
The, we'll have our own registration period, that it won't interfere at all, if they just can still exist.
He's just making sure that basketball team don't get to finish.
Registration fees from all these families.
Basketball will already be started, so they'll be towards the end, so it won't, that should already be.
But is there anything that stops us from starting prior to that?
Nope.
That's what I'm saying, we can have our own.
Yeah, I could use it, yeah, yeah, uh, just.
The only, the, the only thing I guess about, if you start prior to that, would be that, until our agreement is over, they have power.
Yeah, but basketball, thank goodness, isn't very much at the heart, so.
No.
Are we gonna have like an open period of time where people can apply?
That's up to you guys, I mean, I don't know if you wanna go with them, or if you wanna actually put something out there and have people submit.
I would, I would do it just so later on, somebody can't go down the road and say that we behind, they back, went in, made this secret agreement, and then came up with them. So if we advertise them, we put it out and give everybody an opportunity, that's the fairest way to do it, because that wasn't the way it was done last time, so let's not make the same mistake.
Please don't take that.
No, 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 I don't say, I don't say, it's just nobody took the time to.
Oh, oh, right.
Say anything to y'all.
But you still gotta, just like we advertise these meetings, you still gotta advertise.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
Well, I, I have to say that I agree with how you're doing it that way.
Yeah, I agree with it. Yeah, recently, I've been, we'll throw in the newspaper and I give them thirty days to.
Well, they, they actually, longer than that, well, because we're not gonna meet again until November, so they got them all until then to submit before, before our next meeting.
I mean, the only thing I've done is like did reach out to the other person that we've been talking to, um.
She's also.
She texts me, she personally texts me and said she'll do anything to support us and every, I mean, we've been talking to people.
The only reason she didn't join our board was because she's got her own fears, so she's very much on board with this.
I do wanna say that we have made a step in the positive direction.
I've been, I've been trying to do it for four years.
We're really.
After the week I had last week, I was relatively weak, I cannot tell y'all.
And if, if.
I've been trying to do it for four years.
If that are.
I know you have. I'm really interested in that.
And there's four of us here tonight.
My, um, family, I'm going to be the first person to sign it up.
Oh.
We want to bring everybody back to Bronson, everybody left, they want the chief.
I talked to, I can tell you, I talked to two parents this weekend, I watch the NASCAR race with every Sunday, so there's already six kids coming back to play baseball and T-ball, and they.
I love that.
They coach in Williston, so.
Yeah, we've spoken to a lot of people. We were forced to, there's people that live in Bronson that had to go to Trenton.
Right, right, Archer, Trenton, Williston, and Chiefland got a lot of Bronson players because of the fact that there was just too much drama and too much disorganization, so.
Just make sure.
I know that six kids are coming back on, on.
Make sure that you don't, um, disregard people who stuck with, you know. The coach who stayed, the coach who stayed, make sure we don't disregard those people.
Thank you, Michelle.
All the people that supported, because I tell you, I have been wanting them to, to not be in that position, but when the girls went to the World Series, I had to support, teams held down. And that's, that's really and truly, aside as the situation is, that's the way it should be. Like even when we don't agree on everything, we still gotta support our kids.
All right, last one on my list is the meeting with the Levy County Building Department. So I want to give you an update on that. So I did meet with, um, Levy Kill, Levy County Building Official David Meyer and Darlene Slabber, who's technically a little library, but she does admin for the Department now. So a couple things, and I just kind of gave you a copy of like my handwritten notes, which was in the packet, but, um, probably, I'll take a few of my takeaways. First and foremost, our fees are way too low. Date I read out, told my, I read it. So Darlene told me that a new roof with the county is one thirty-one seventy-five with tax. But basically, if you look on the actual fee schedule of the Levy County in your packet, it's two twenty-five, so it's some sort of like six dollars. I had Kelly pull three roof replacements for us, three active roof replacements right now. They came in at one oh seven, one twenty, and one ninety-nine versus two thirty-one. So that's not good. Um, did you check whether it was city, though?
I did not.
Why are they just very, why are they different practice square footage? Is it currently flat or?
So that's a person. Number two is, I did ask about them taking over everything, like planning and zoning, pro enforcement, building official, and they said they can't do it because his office only handles, he's building official, so he does inspections and plan reviews. Planning and zoning is handled by, I don't know if you see these, six, seven hectares and not sure if for the city. So that's not much. This is the biggest anyway. So they do issue same-day permits for ease, I'm gonna call it easy book, and only residential. There's no such thing for commercial. So the three examples he gave me were A C change-offs, roof replacements, again, I was on tour, water heater, water heater substitutions, anything where it's light for Mike. So you're taking out your, you know, existing A C, you're putting in exact same units, just brand new. You can go to the county, talk to their permit tech, the permit tech will review the application. It's gonna take maybe twenty, thirty minutes and they will issue a same-day permit. We do not have the ability to do that, okay. Now, it is something that Mike said he could work with Kelly and Kelly's gonna go through and, you know, get her permit tech license, because those are certifications she can get. It would not, we wouldn't, currently, we would not be able to do same-day only because, I mean, Kelly has to, she takes her, president, so they would think it would be twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so she would give her time to book her things. But it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to necessarily wait another week for Mike to move to that. They did say in general, their turnaround's about two weeks. He said two to four, depending on what it is, I'll complicate it. And they do not offer electronic permits. I mean, they have the same thing as us. They can email information, but it's not done to a system like what we're working on. The city of Williston, I was over there last week, I'm meeting with the city manager, they are going to electronic permits, but he said it's tens of thousands of dollars. It's, it's, yeah, it's a hundred thousand, right?
It's not.
It's not. So I was like, okay, yeah. So, I mean, it was a good conversation, you know, they, they are willing to take it back if that's something that you guys want to do. But again, they wouldn't be able to take over everything, only the inspections and the plan reviews because they came to planning and zoning. Those are my takeaways.
I'm also having to, you know, to look at the permitting schedule.
Yes.
Fee schedule and definitely change that.
Dig up the one that we started and then Dave left and I came on board and I can't.
I remember we started.
We did, we did, we had like a one pager.
Yeah, flat, a flat range.
It was flat, right? Even the counties many pagers.
Because we pulled all the, we pulled the fee schedule when we were doing the.
Yeah.
It was based on Crystal River.
Because there's a lot of legal.
Right.
Technicality, you have to do with your changing building fees.
Well, I mean, you know, one of the things we talked about is, you know, our minimum fee for everything is eighty-five dollars. And we're paying safe build one ten an hour.
Right.
So we lose twenty-five dollars if someone walks in the door and wants a permit, just off the bat. So we're already covering, you know, an hour and a half's cost. So we really need to, we need to.
We're not all in this situation, by the way. So Kelly's interested in doing the permit.
Kelly is interested in doing, now that we're, we're finally, we're over to Koozie now, we're not using J U S anymore. We found a glitch today, which was not fun. There was three different links on the Town of Bronson website. The, like a pay here link, and one of them unfortunately brought them to the old system. And Kelly found like, what'd she say, eighty-five payments today to go through in the old.
And it's not only that, for anybody that lives in this city, if you have a bookmarked, do not lose that because next month, you will get your water shut.
No, he killed the bookmark today.
No, he did kill it.
No, he asked him to.
But if I have a bookmark on my phone.
It should, it's, it's a dead one, no doubt.
Yeah.
It was because of that one link.
Like, okay.
He corrected the one on the front page and he corrected the one to the right, there was one to the left on that utility page, and that kept bringing you to the old system. So that wasn't great, so we just found out we had to basically do double work to get those into the core system. But hopefully after this, I mean, it's growing pains. I mean, we're never gonna know every single issue that we're gonna have. But there are three people that are set up on auto pay.
It was, it was real simple to get on and set it up, even with the, with the, um, but the only thing I don't, is that, so, that's what, that's what I emailed them. So like our church account was set up before I was going. So it asked for like a phone number that it, that the account was set up on and I'm like, well, I don't know. So that's how I gotta get with her to make sure that, like, my number is on there. So then, because it asks you to put your account number in and then you have to put either a phone number or like your social. Well, the church don't have a social and it's not under my number, so I couldn't set up our account because I didn't have the information. And so I get why it verifies that way, so that she may get calls for that. If it's a, if it's a real old account, you're gonna have to like figure out what number is in, not even fix that immediately.
Yeah, so we called this morning and he said the same thing and he said, well, he obviously has this account for decades. He said, I haven't had that phone number in years. And Kelly's like, I can't.
If you don't change it.
If you didn't update your phone number with me, we don't go after you to update it.
So at least Kelly has a number. So if it's her own number, you could go in and edit it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, once you set the account up and you can, but it's, like you said, it's just linking in the first time.
Right.
If you don't remember your old phone number, because we don't do socials, so it asks you by phone number. So it, it's just growing pains, but we'll, we'll get there.
But it was easy and I liked it. I liked the way the view is real simple to follow. It's like, you know how you get your electric bill and it gives you that, um, so many that, it goes back like that. And the setup auto pay took me like five minutes. So it was, it was real easy to do.
She's very, you have anyone too.
Yes, but that's I gotta get my, my other.
Was there anybody else that?
So it was, it was real simple in that she does, she has a handout that is basically step one, step two, step three, real simple to do too. And I thought that that was real good.
Would it be beneficial to have somebody else, like from help or something, any of the permit tech stuff too?
Good. I don't really want to do it, but I don't really achieve it.
Well, like if we want to get to the thing, it has to be an offer.
Yeah, because if somebody walks in with a, you know, application, they're gonna be able to, you know, review it.
That's what I think.
Since it, it has to be Kelly.
But we just can't, we couldn't do it on the fly because Kelly's, I mean, we probably got, I don't know, over a hundred calls today. I mean.
Yeah, it'd have to be like next day. We do it right next day.
Yeah, well, I mean, even.
Next day.
You don't want to promise something that's gonna create issues for your staff. I would do twenty-four, forty-eight, or forty-eight, thirty-two hours. Because if we have a day, I mean, if you tell, if Ms. B comes in.
If it's Bill, then.
Well, it's not only that. If Ms. B comes in, I'm using, and we have a twenty-four hour period, she's saying you're getting twenty-four hours. I have a water leak, but you're not gonna get anything done in that day. I mean, the last big water leak, we had, me and Sue were at the office at twelve twenty-five at night. Like you can't, you need to have at least a.
A cuss word.
And I saw, I saw a little check that I got for that.
Yeah, right.
I thought it would be a lot more than that.
Yeah, I thought it would too, but.
Well, no, no, they're.
I'm grateful for that.
It would have been, no, you want overtime because the first water break happened before three. So they just technically hit forty-hour overtime.
Hey, we'll take that down together. We'll take a really good.
Wait till I, wait till I send you my.
The only, the only thing I would ask about having somebody else train is in the event she leaves and we lose our training person. That was the reason why I would, I would recommend training two people instead of one because, or if she goes on maternity leave and she's out for six weeks, you don't have that person in it. That is, that's capable of, I'm just saying, I'm.
You, you should have to be, be like.
I mean, you definitely have to be making.
I mean, two, I, I would just, I would say two people because you never know. I mean, we're not, we're not wishing anybody away or anybody in the long term.
It's not, Kelly doesn't go nowhere. That's my friend.
She's allowed to go anywhere, okay. We'll tell her.
Listen, ma'am, there may be a fee, hey, are we online now?
With a credit card, yes.
Yeah, credit card.
But it's less, it was three and a half percent with the old company and now it's two and a half percent. Or a minimum of a dollar fifty. If you have a little small bill, it's gonna be a little like twenty-five dollars, it's a minimum of a dollar fifty. But you can still pay it online and set up an auto pay.
So Mr. Elijah, you don't have to put on the underwear. You ain't gotta leave your house.
One thing I want to know about it is, uh, you know, you know, occasionally, people have, I guess, a false bill. You know, where.
Like a water leak, you mean?
Where they would get charged or outraged or some money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What would happen in that situation?
If that's in the auto pay, if it's in the auto pay, it's gonna auto pay it out.
That's what it does.
Yeah.
But you can also.
But you can look at it. You can also look at your usage now on your.
Well, if you, if you know it, yeah.
You had to look and it puts all that money out your account and now you bankrupt.
You can also.
You're bankrupt by right.
Well, you, it, you, it'll email you your bill. So if you, you're gonna get your bill before the auto pay. So if the auto pay is set to come out on the twenty-fifth, I'm gonna have my bill on the fifteenth, so you're gonna have it before then. So I open my bill and it's a thousand dollars and I know I can go in and turn the auto pay off. And I need to come up here and figure out, you know, what the issue is, so that you can actually get your bill ahead of time.
Yeah, that helps, of course.
Yeah, because that's how, I mean, the, uh, C F is the same thing. Like, my electric bill is emailed to me well before I get my regular bill.
Right, and that's why we recommend you go in there because you can set up, do you want to get it, like you said, emailed, you want it mailed, text message, you can just pick all of your own preferences, whatever you want.
And the other thing too is, there's only ten people in here, but worth it. If you've got to set up your account and it's not letting you set it up, up your account and it's because you have your phone number, whoever currently has a city water bill, you need to remember when you originally set your account up, whether it be ten, fifteen, three days ago. If you have changed your name, changed your email, it's not gonna access it. You have to use your original phone number because unless you have informed us that there's changes, we have no way of going. And it will not give you access, because I got yelled and screamed at and they wrestled.
But that's a phone call. I mean, that's a, hey, I changed my number, this is such a, that's.
Okay.
So I got.
Curtis is not here.
Cut out those days on the youth program again. I gotta speak, everyone speak.
Yeah.
Okay, Jack Martell. Uh, let's start with infrastructure on John, uh, James Cobb Park. Um, we have plant, I mean, it's just deteriorating. Hang old builders inside out. We don't need prisons, we don't need y'all to do it. We can take care of that. Um, scoreboard, we contact Captain, we contact code, we utilize them. Uh, central Florida Electric of London, I have some contacts with them. They can redo all the lighting, talk to a couple people.
He's aligned with pipe, so that's how we have those connections.
I got a guy over here that's willing, I mean, he's, he's told the, the previous, you know, Scott and Angela that he'd be over there and redo what needed to be redone. They, they never got in touch with. Bleacher covers, um, concession, um, the, the fields, maintenance. There's just so much stuff that I have written down that's not here. I'd like to build some sort of, you could at least utilize that tall building where you, y'all would for movies or.
Oh, yeah.
Utilize that, have, have events out there, community events, fundraising events. Where we have a lot of contacts with the schools, both, you know, high school, middle school. Yeah, we're trying to work together, you know, we, we spoke with them, um, as far as, you know, uniforms, this, that, and the other. We're gonna keep everything local. Can't remember, there's just so much, it was in that proposal. I, I wasn't prepared to speak. But basically, I mean, we want to bring revenue, you know, here, you know. We want to have a nice park, we want to have nice, nice equipment, uh, we want to have nice jerseys. Well, the park can look nice, you know, uh, statically pleasing, so when, when people come here, they're like, hey, this is beautiful, let's come back, you know, that's, they're gonna come here, we can bring more people here, and we spend money on these little businesses that we don't have, you know, and blah, blah, blah. Uh, what else, what else? We're gonna try to work with all the churches, you know, we just have school programs. Like I said, I didn't have an agenda, so just coming off the top of my head. We have a lot of plans, a lot of connections, I mean, a lot of people that are also willing to donate, you know, donations for banners, blah, blah, blah. I mean, we have, we have a lot of different streams of income for the projects, you know, that we proposed in our proposal, so. I don't know what to say. I, I didn't bring something to go off, but, I mean.
Chad, bring your scheduled board meetings.
Ma'am?
When you, when you're scheduled.
Uh, they're quarterly. Do you have the paper? I don't have the paper. They're quarterly, they can be scheduled at any time with, for. Oh, oh, another thing I'd like to touch on, um, and we're, we're gonna try to do everything digitally. You know, we use cash app, which goes to Square, which goes to our bank accounts, all registrations, I mean.
So everything's transparent. Every time you can say we need a bank statement.
You know, that's what we're just cash out. Just letting you know.
No, he meant Square. He meant through Square.
He meant through Square.
Yeah, through Square, so, you know, to be a name.
Need no cash. There won't be an issue because everything will be on paper.
There'll be cash for some people, that need to get it, but that's different. Everything ordered.
There'll be a receipt.
I was just gonna say.
Always.
Fifteen hundred bucks, you know, it's not gonna be like that. It's gonna be professional. We're utilizing local banks to do all this, you know.
I called Ms. B to get out of the way here because I didn't know we were gonna give it out to the public. I was so bummed when you guys said that. But, you know, we want to work with the high school and the elementary school and, and, you know.
Yeah, we don't want to go against the grain. We want to get everybody together and.
We went to A T R B, talked to local business owners that want to sponsor but didn't want to work with these people. There's so much.
Which you used to.
There's so much that they did, that they did take advantage, you know, and, and.
A Bronson plumber, and his company is Bronson.
We didn't like it, you know, a hundred dollars, but if there is money, you know, seven thousand, whatever it is, you know. Plus, there's so many loans, we could, we could, uh, grant money, we can apply for, so.
We also reviewed the five-year approval plan from twenty, I'm just helping him because he doesn't have, the five-year approval plan from twenty-one to twenty-six. The splash pad and the structure over the bleachers and the amenity center. I was thinking, you know, maybe something like Homestead Park in Williston that's more outdoors. So it would be, you know, a lot less expensive to build something like that than something that's entirely indoors. I think the proposed, it was like between three hundred and five hundred thousand for an amenity center.
You know, it's a public park.
Yeah. But for weddings.
Would you be able to build a small structure that you could rent out, work at parties, X, Y, and Z? Could, could you do that there? I mean, could we build something, in charge, I know it's a public park.
You can't make money off of parks.
Well, if they went to a nonprofit and then got put back into the field, for example.
And that, now you can do different kinds of stuff, but you can't rent the park out and say, you know, y'all gonna have a birthday party here.
It, it goes back to the organization, you can. It's not going in our pocket, it's going back to the organization.
It's the law.
Yeah, no, no, I'm serious, I don't know.
Yeah, so I'm not, we're, we're, we're just bands, they're just bands. Yeah, so I'm not, we're, we're, we're just, you practice bands that carry kids when they don't have support parents to bring to practice.
Yeah, that's another thing, I wanna get with the churches, um, you know, the field directly across.
Summer programs.
Church, um, we, we've got a lot of ideas, I don't have it all on paper right now, I do have the house, I just didn't bring it with us, I thought we were just gonna go over the termination of that and, you know, there's like, speak, 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 so.
I think we're, we're all receptive to anything right now.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but you, but like you said, you put together pretty good, you know, packets before, and like I say, I'm, I'm sold on it, I think the rest of us are too, yeah. So let's just, you know, we wanted to go through the process.
I said, no, I mean, another, wait for it to have another meeting and then go through everything that we are actually going, uh, you got a proposal, but there's more, there's a lot.
Reach out to, uh, um, your new, well, will be your new county commissioner for this district about the money through the county, um, 'cause he gets to choose what he does with it, so.
We did hear about that, we were just waiting, we, we don't, we don't know how this process would work, you know.
Yeah, but he gets to choose when he puts it to use.
Are you giving us the legal aid?
Huh?
No.
Okay, so.
You're gonna put something, y'all put something out for like thirty days for somebody else to make a proposal and then after that we'll know something, soon we'll know something. Okay, okay, appreciate it, thanks very much.
All right, Curtis is not here, he is on vacation. Jim?
Couple things, uh, one of theirs, we've got our estimate for getting our SBA's redone for this year. Of course, race is on, I'm gonna listen to the other guys. You guys got it scheduled, that's probably gonna be there around the first part of October. Their, the ten eight is the, the only service provider for MSAs in Florida, so we kinda have to go with that.
We have that one.
Everything fit tested, well tested, everything handled, so this year. Huh? The, uh, right now, the approach is twenty-nine, fifty-six, sixty. So now, they don't have all of ours, you know, or not, it was tested and re-certified another year. The only thing that may change on this is they have two hundred and fifty-seven, sixty in their tribal service, they have something up to do it. We've been talking back and forth with a couple of other departments, we're gonna try and all schedule at the same time, so we all won't have to pay the full, full amount, so maybe down a little bit, because it should be the back end, but.
That makes sense.
Just figured, since, uh, we all have the same equipment, that'd be easier just to do it that way.
Is it hard to get on their schedule for this? That's not gonna make it any harder, is it?
No, it's not gonna make it any harder. They work with, with folks pretty good. We had to have one of our SBA's work on this little, two ago, so, and they came up, because they were in the area. And, uh, it's definitely very, very flexible for, for the coordinate department, so it'll be this year here.
This one's got to be done, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, um, estimate for ten-eight fire safety.
I see.
Got a motion in a second to proceed with the ten-eight fire safety estimate, all those in place, so by the city hot.
Aye.
Close, same motion carried.
And the other, the other thing that's on the agenda is a letter from Gail. We sent one, I wanted to send it out, but it was a little tirade, he called it out, talked to some backs, so. But it was concerning the purchase of this truck. I had turned him on to a Rand FX cap type system for the back, um, we were through the process looking at it, and the gap alone was two, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, plus eleven grand, plus fifteen hundred shipping to get it here. And, um, it's just a waterproof unit that slid in the back. When we started looking around and looking what other people have, the county and everything, they all have the, uh, less expensive ton on, that's about thirty-five hundred dollars, and I realize that it's grant money, but, you know, in the end, we still paid a certain portion of that. And the truck is currently on there, when we work through the lease, I'll, I'll aim the payment for that truck the way that we approved it. Tyler and I talked about it a lot, try to come up with a reasonable solution, I think it would be equal to what that one was, just not point as fancy, but, you know, we just need function, what we need, you know, things to look at, but, uh, I told my passes letter on, so I hope, I don't have chance to read it, um, I hope I really have to, but, uh, also my explanation on why we chose what we did, um, you know, our annual payment for the two trucks is gonna be about fifty-three thousand dollars. That's fifteen percent of our total budget, including grass, so, you know, I'm always trying to cut, cross it with ten and still be functional, have what we need, but, um, it was kinda like this other, other, you know, my line comes down to what we're gonna afford, we can't, we don't have a great budget, so, we don't have a big budget, so, Chief Lemon fills the gap, so, just, like, do we really need on top of the table, you know, I don't hide anything, so, you know, she really feels this strongly and wanna pass it on to the guys, Janice, the voices, the pin.
Um, so, in this letter, it says that this decision was made with little to no input from the, but he understands that, does he not? That, like, we didn't just, like, pick this out of the.
Right. Oh, I explained that to him, but he, he's, he's still stuck on that. Talked that, you know, he spent seven months in Europe, you know, communications seemed delayed a little bit, but all this was upfront, because when he was first being a quote from the FX people, I told him that, you know, because of time delay, because these things, once you order them, they're hand-built.
Right.
And so it was gonna be about six months before you get that, so Tyler and I were trying to get somebody to replace, pick up trucks and do this major problems.
Right.
For the brakes and everything else on system, so, um.
Okay, we got stuff.
So, I just wanted.
What's the difference in what he's trying to get as opposed to what you decided to get?
Rand FX is a full fiberglass capsule that slides in the back of the truck. We're, we're looking at is just the rear cap on the back, the seal. The other one looks flight modifications here and there, you could take it out and put it in another truck if you wanted down the road, because you can do the same with the cap on. We got the links come out, we looked at them, and we looked at their construction, we didn't actually look at one of those units. I probably have a brochure that I can show you on, um, I really liked the starboard, but when the cost came back, I just couldn't.
Really? It's all like me, this one, uh, a bit, this, they can barely hold a pint up.
Twelve-five versus thirty-five hundred?
Yes.
Beautiful.
And it just, I just couldn't see, sort of, actually, we have so many other needs in the department for small tools and equipment that we can use. That's why, I guess, I don't know, I realize it's a grant, but, you know, they pay thirty-five percent of what, what we get, so, but we're still trying to balance what we have in our budgets, they tend to be.
All right, can you hear the discussion on this?
I see some, you only got to be. I have real quick.
Are they both made out of copper laths?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And the one we're, the one we're getting that's gonna be outfitted on the truck is the same exact one that the, that the county's got on our retired Jeep trucks. It's gonna be the exact same setup, so, and it works for them, we know it's proven, proven work there, we know it works, we know it's water-tight on their trucks, because they have all their, they have, they got a lot more money worth of equipment in the back than we gonna have.
So the only thing that the twelve-five has is just the brim?
It's a different, it's a different style.
A robot system?
A robot system, that you're talking about?
We're gonna have a robot, but it's not, this, this is just a top.
Yeah, just.
The, this one, this one kinda come up and it kinda was like a house, it was, and it was a little bit taller.
Okay.
I mean.
So like a north south one, okay?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was maybe a little bit bigger, and I think he, and I think Gail wanted that one, because he wanted, and another reason he's angry is because we're not putting a cap system in the back of it immediately, which is a compressed foam system. We're putting out, like, if you come across a fire, and you have, you wanna take out the cap system, it costs like forty-five thousand dollars, that we didn't get grant for, so, I mean, we can't afford to put that in the back, but it would, I mean.
But, you know, in addition to the, the cost of the cap.
Yeah.
All the other stuff that was on that, all the lighting, all the radio works and all that, would still have to be done with a new cap.
Yeah.
So we're just talking about the little cup in the back of the truck, basically.
You're talking a ten thousand dollar difference just for a little cap in the back, I mean, it's gonna be versus, it's gonna be thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-two is the change versus forty-three thousand dollars.
So we.
Okay, um, I just wanted to let y'all know that tomorrow morning the folks be up there putting the fiberglass in the potter station. During this last week, we got all worrying about coming late and we got appointment, we need ten tomorrow, they're gonna be in the internet and the potter.
Cool, so.
Also, you know, the county's putting a new communication center, and they did new E O, E O T bill, and they're processing swapping radio systems over. Tomorrow morning, we're gonna start putting new radios in all our engine, all our trucks.
Now, the price of the new radio so far.
No, well, it's a affiliate, yeah, get our communication center up, we're going back to the old solar system, yeah.
No, it is here.
Trying to get some prices on generators, I got one quote, we need thirty-five K, the fund one for fire stations, thirty-six-five for the well. Based on the report from Central Florida Electric, they ran all the loads and things like that, and that's the number we can get. I'm still waiting on the second quote, we'll probably have to end up businessing out, so.
Everything here, well, like, they use our school system and our stuff, everything for a shelter, is, the generator would be something that we could use in case of storms? Is there some way that we could apply for some hope to getting a, a really good one through something, through one of those, like FEMA or something like that?
We're gonna apply it for grants, and we still have.
They just closed a new brick one that we just did, we did a generator on Stevens Street in the station, it just closed, so I think it's only once a year.
So, you know, playing on what we do, um, we still got a little bit of the station grant.
Okay.
So, you know, probably add that in there, uh, will give over, but, uh, you know, we'll just have to see what, what's been out with the actual places to come back at.
Are your doors all working out?
Uh, we have one that's still a problem, we're waiting on cars to come in for it.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I think it's gonna function pretty well, I have one that shakes a little bit, but it, it opens and closes, it's doing all right.
Does a little dancy dance as it goes down.
Yeah, it'll catch it up top, it's been out now, but, and with that, that's about all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Horn, can you hear me?
Hello?
He's on.
Oh, did he come back? Did it update and come back on?
He ain't there.
Jerry Horn, can you hear us?
He's been a while, he's been a while. I, I don't know, thank God, I haven't reflected, we do have, like, any of these things, we, you're all welcome to come, I give that, so. Mr. Siri?
Um, have we heard from, what is it, Coloma, Azaias, whatever that is. Yeah, what?
Yep. They submitted their first two building permit applications, like those not compressed, because the last time they were meeting with them, literally, it was ten of us surrounding, um, tapes, like, you know, all the people from Tioga, and they had interns, they had all these people, and then they submitted their applications and they were terrible.
So they had to back?
No, um, I don't say that they approved them, to look into it, they were working on it, they were working on that, yeah, so hopefully, once that happens.
Ground within it. And no issues at the park, other than it's underwater?
Underwater.
It's underwater.
It is deep underwater, I said, I, uh.
Yeah, can we do something about that?
We'll figure it out.
Yes, we will.
Build a different park somewhere else.
Yeah. Really?
It's just swamp now, yeah.
No, we're gonna call that swamp.
That's the only thing you can do.
Can't you just ask Dan, is that?
No, you would do, wouldn't you?
Um, we're, we're looking into.
It's a little bit big, you can't see the mark right now.
The retention area back over to the back side, they live with the county or whatever caused to do this, um. It's hard to move water, uh, I seen a man, raised some sand the other day, and y'all were talking about the water, it was over the roof, going into his house. He said it caused the cove, it's clogged up, and there was twelve inches of water on top of the roof, that's retarded, okay. Uh, there, there are times when we have work like we've had here, there's nothing we can do about.
It's good to have some water.
You know, if you build a retention pond right beside a Cypress Pond, you don't have a pond, you're not gonna have a retention pond, you're gonna have a pond.
Right.
So, there, there are some questions here.
Well, I think we just deal with it, because we need the rain to make the field as nice, like you said, if you do a D R A, and you don't put a liner and spend a million dollars on this D R A, it's just gonna turn it into a pond, it's a swamp out there. I mean, we, it's not a huge issue, it's a soccer field, it's a football field, it's fun, we're not gonna play football field there anyway, we're not gonna play the high school, baseball, softball fields are okay, it's small tables.
We, we, I have talked to them about looking into doing a, over, you know, taking some sand and then just coming in, they have a sand truck, where we could come in and just.
Top dressing.
Yeah.
Top dressing, uh, if you do that enough over a period of time.
We'll build it up.
You'll be able to, but it's gonna take a program to do that, and.
We'll set it up here.
You gotta have it to get it started.
Have y'all been over there, how, I would have, or the, do we need to ask the mosquito truck to spray out there?
Please, please, my babies are crying, Haley.
I, and I already told them, I asked them to put stuff in the water to the.
They did, they were there, they were there last week.
I sprayed it down before every practice, because all the babies.
They're supposed to be putting stuff in the standing water. Pretty bad.
Are the swimmers loud like that?
They're gonna.
I went out there the other day.
Y'all signed up?
That, you think them ki- kids that swim in a pond like that don't care nobody's sign, I know, I'm glad we got it there.
Signed it there, it don't matter.
There was swimming in the.
Yeah.
I wonder what you had to say, what you had to say about neutral over there the other day?
Well, I went out there the other day and, uh, my oldest son, he used to work at the county, and he did the construction, heard all this, looking, and he told me, he said, he said, I, I see a place where there's a pond, and he wanted to get the Curtis, and they, they're gonna get together to see about taking the back door and do some re, and changing it. But when you see the water blowing in underneath the cove in the road that goes into our compound, and it was literally, I, we, we were there and it was just, it was coming out of that Cypress Pond, under the, blowing up, and it, the water was blowing in there at that high, like the rest of the road, and it going into that field, running down it, and then back around this, and it going back up the other side. So what I'm saying here is the water is running in reverse, what it normally would be doing. Normally, the water would be running in, but they cut that temper over there, and that adjoining place, no land on, so. Normally, the water would be running up, but they cut that temper over there, in that adjoining place, no land on it, of course. And everything has been upset because of that. Now, we can't do anything about that, you know, so, but you, the only thing you could do for instance, like, you could go in and stop that cover up completely, but then it's just gonna move everywhere.
That's right.
It is what it is.
That's all I got.
Uh, Todd?
Um, well, we did take delivery of the new truck today, so, um, it's gonna be one of Williston to get outfitted. Big Ben dropped it off for us today, so, hopefully, hopefully, there's still that, like, six-week build time once we get it to them. I don't know, it's been a month or two since we spoke to them, so, they may be backed up, but hopefully, in a month or two, we'll be seeing the new shiny rig pull around through town. Um, that, one other thing, I wanted to start, we could start looking into, it's not right in the fire department, but, uh, me and Sue and, um, I talked about it before, about, like, starting doing the, um, in terms of portable housing, the tiny houses. I said, I, I would like this to look into, allowing those, and, um, I know that they got shot down before.
So you mean smaller than the seven hundred square feet that would be required by the O D R's?
Change of the O D R's to allow smaller.
About small ones?
Three hundred square feet?
I wonder if...
You haven't seen the ones in the...
The size of the whole head one?
They're tiny.
Two, three, four hundred square feet, you're telling me?
We, uh, count.
Okay.
I would like to take a look at it. I don't see if, I mean, it's, it's nice as a regular house.
Yeah.
And where, where everybody's, y'all know about portable housing, that's a way for young people and old people to have.
You got one room.
Yeah, most of them are one bedroom, one bath. Oh, yeah, most of them, most of them got, they got separate bedrooms.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
You see, they got one square feet or something?
Most of them, most of them is lock style.
So you go upstairs?
Yeah, you go upstairs, it's a lot.
Oh, okay. So it's more with...
Do you even really appreciate that?
Yeah, it's a black home.
It's beautiful, black homes are beautiful.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you got, you have a lot of them that are not, I mean, you can get a tiny house, it still costs you two hundred thousand dollars, and when the black home costs a hundred eighty thousand dollars. But you can also make a really nice one for fifty thousand dollars. Because, I mean, I got, my cabin up in Georgia is, is, you know, it's four hundred square feet. But it's, I got a bathroom, a bedroom, and we got a small kitchenette. I mean, I can live in it, it's nice enough, I can live in it here around.
It's one room.
Yeah, it's just one.
That's a little bit...
It's, 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 it'd be something good for a house.
For one person.
Yeah. For someone elderly or, or young people, I mean, young people can make it work if they have to.
Yeah, I can try and, um, I'll see if I can touch base again with the guy named Ramsey Wilson, I was talking to him for a while, and I kind of found out.
I just think it would be good for...
For older people, one person.
Yeah.
Somebody came by Thursday or Friday, went to see that, or even know something about tiny homes and fast food, like property.
Yeah, I don't know, Kelly told me, kinda mentioned something about...
Yeah, he was in the office for about thirty minutes, then he went...
But like, like, you can go to, like, Shed Ranch now, and buy sheds that are engineered, two-by-six walls, that meet the wind ratings for Florida, just as like a mobile warehouse does, and you can get a fourteen-by-forty, which is only about twenty feet shorter than a single wideboard home would be. And you can live in that thing, I mean...
There's a lot of places, like, you know, all the sides of, the parks, the state parks, you know, a lot of state parks, and, and, City County is, you know, such a...
So Lino, but Lino was doing a certain update on a whole cabin, so Lino's gonna be all that stuff.
All right, just for you.
Um, our Alicia Beckham has been wanting someone to encourage people to actually do trick-or-treating. So, I'm just putting it out there, if you live in town, you know...
Why don't we encourage her to go to Tricker Treats?
For Tricker Treats, and set up a trunk?
So, so, this, Ms. Beckham is already gonna be there. That, it's not one of those things where it's and/or, it's just one of those things where you could do both, you know, if you want. If you're interested in both, please do go. I haven't seen that one, no, if it's difficult for you, then you're gonna do it, but she's trying to encourage people to go back to doing that in addition to the Tricker Treat, like, for my kids, I feel like Tricker Treat is a special place.
Same, it's same.
But you have other towns that do offer, like, the trick-or-treats or stuff like that, and where she lives, it's, it's really not...
It's over here on Court Street.
She lives on Main Street.
Well, of course, she came to see you, okay?
She had, she lived a million years ago.
Down there, they have a food party for everybody to do trick-or-treat.
I'm not gonna lie, I usually go there.
In the family up there.
I'm just saying, we never had, I've never had a trick-or-treater at my house since...
Yeah, my mom lives on Court Street, never.
I've never had a trick-or-treater.
Well, part of it, I grew up in a city, you trick-or-treat, and I will tell you the biggest thing, Lord, I'm even gonna say this, the biggest thing that you're not going to, is you don't have sidewalks. There's no sidewalks down there.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm walking so many feet from the jail, like, people are afraid to just walk there.
Oh, in the town, though, if you got kids and they're going trick-or-treating, I'm, I'm encouraging you to...
Turn your light on, so they know you're active.
Take them out, with your Beckham town, to the door, she would...
There you go, we'll just pass around her, I guess.
She, um, she would, she would, she would be thrilled, I promise you. I, I'll see you.
On trees in front of their house, on Main Street, in front of Alicia's house, and Eric's house. One, right in front of, uh, Bookers Town, right in front of Iris Alley.
Yeah.
There's two on trees right outside of Main Street, that she, that she would ask if they could make it be cleaned up, trimmed up, instead of...
Her property?
I don't know, that's what, I, I said, I don't know, very cities...
Main Street home.
Yeah, if you told me, if I'm not mistaken, she called, we spoke to her, and she not saying they're on her actual property.
I don't know if they're on, I haven't...
So we also sent a letter, because, no, because the piece of property is, oh, it's either, we weren't a hundred percent sure if it was her property, so you remember us looking at this, or the piece of property...
Next door.
Next to hers, it's one of those two properties, and it's private, so we sent a letter to them as well. It was like two, three weeks ago.
No, I have no conceit of it, it's not even... No.
My last thing is, is that, um, if you wanna make a change, don't come to a view, and yell out everything that you have promised, and then leave, and don't listen to any of the things that's gonna change, first of all. Um, second of all, we are having a volunteer day on October the nineteenth, I hope everybody that wants to change everything shows up.
All right.
Nineteenth, if you're before Halloween, it's in the cemetery, we gonna have some fun.
You're gonna have to pay the...
That's right.
I would not be there, honestly. Not on this one.
I've been, I've been at the other...
He's been in my office several times, and, 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 you know, I tried to explain to him, I mean, I, I love that everybody must have embarrassed the Williston and chief. I appreciate it, I love those towns, they're great, I tried to explain to him, they have a hundred employees, and they have a twenty-five million dollar budget in Williston.
And they got a lot more people they brought, so you can...
We have ten employees, and we have a three million dollar budget.
But if you have somebody...
And I'm not trying to, you know...
If you have somebody that wants to change everything all at one time, why do we have their attention, it's the A, it's the A D H B.
I, I get it.
And, I mean, after they left, several things that they complained about was explained. So...
I, I know, I'm not...
Can I say this too, because...
And I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, but this will be going on forever here, same, same, same.
Yeah, because Alan will stir people up, not just Alan, but other people will stir them up, and then your employees get in front of it, and then people come at us.
He's been here all, all, all year.
Yeah, and then you have people yelling and screaming, and I don't know what it could have been this past six months, but people are rude and nasty. And it gets old.
You're welcome, Mr. Warren, thank you.
I'm good.
You good? Uh, anybody else?
Motion, Kansas?
Oh, who can Jacksonville Sheriff's Office? Jacksonville Sheriff's Office.
It's on the front page, it's the second page, bro.
The check has not been tapped, so when you see those checks come through, they don't have a number on it, they're in the system to be printed, they just have to be reviewed and paid, but that is...
We have a former employee that took some classes for a fire department, signed a contract with us, had to be employed with us for one year, for us to pay for the, um, classes. He left before the year was up, and then taking them to small places.
So we have to allow him to be...
Is that our homeless full-time employee, or...
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just a second. You have a motion, just a second?
No, I don't think you have any.
All right, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in papers, so you can probably say aye. Both the same motion, carry it out.